Let's open this meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, number two, open public forum. Anybody wishing to speak that's not on the agenda?
Boy, they're rung that awful clock.
Phil, will you make sure that it's down toward, down on the hand? That it's, yeah, not the circle, it's the...
Up.
Up.
Yeah, just like...
Thank you.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Council, and Municipal Administrator. My name is Bill Becker. I live at 25844 Lake Road. It's a St. Cloud address, but I live in the city limits of Rockville. The reason I'm here tonight is because I want to introduce myself to you. I'm a newly-elected council member for the city of Rockville. I look forward to if any time we work together, collaborate together. I think that would be absolutely great. I have met your city administrator a number of times. I believe the first time, you can correct me, Bridget, but I think when we had a little fiasco with our mayor this last year, she was there because she was concerned about your community, and I thought that was very, very nice. So, I just want to introduce myself and I'll let you to your meeting.
Thank you.
Hi.
Good to meet you.
Thank you. Okay, now...
Have a good one.
Anybody else? Otherwise, we'll move on to number three, approval of the amended agenda. I need a motion.
Tell him to come motion.
Gary makes a motion, I need a second.
Oh, second, then.
Shannon seconds it, any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Number four, consent agenda. Recommendation to approve the consent agenda as presented. I need a motion.
Who'll make the motion, you'll front?
Shannon makes a motion, I need a second.
Oh, second.
Jamie seconds it, any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Number five, Recorey Senior Center presentation, Nadine Schnetler.
I'm not sure your protocol for having handouts. Can I just approach the...
Yes.
Yeah? The platform?
If you give them to Jamie, he can...
Okay. Thank you. Well, thank you for allowing us to have on the agenda this evening. We really appreciate having the opportunity. As Mayor Heinem said, I'm Nadine Schnetler, and I am the part-time director for the Recorey Senior Center. And we just kind of wanted to kind of introduce ourselves. Some of you are familiar with us and have actually been in the center, and some of you have not. So, I just kind of wanted to, the little green slip is just a copy of all of our activities that go on every day of every week, and you can see that we have something going on every single day. We have a lot of activities, a combination trying to attract, you know, people of all ages. The blue sheet is just kind of an extension of that, a little bit more of our contact information, and then also some of the things that we offer on the back. And you can see that we offer different trips, we have lunches. I believe that's where Administrator Murphy has been. She has came to the lunch, I believe, in February for our law enforcement appreciation lunch. She came along with Richmond's Administrator Tessa Tomaszczuk, I guess. And just a lot of the different things that we've got going on. And then the first page after that, where it says Recorey Senior Center Annual Meeting, we had our annual meeting last week, and I usually prepare kind of the highlights, the happenings over the last year, as well as the financial highlights and some of the responsibilities that go along with that. And you can see that we have a lot going on. We have, again, the lunches, we have twice-monthly foot clinics, we have our trips, we have stretching and flexibility classes twice a week, we have a seated exercise class once a week, we have a craft sale, we are present at the Chamber Showcase, we have a quilt for raffle that our wonderful quilters do for a Recorey Dollars for Scholars Scholarship. We co-hosted a free health screening fair, we had 38 people that attended, we also purchased a brick for the splash pad. We arranged our center to make it be a little more welcoming and a little safer for me to not have my back to the door. We co-hosted a Medicare presentation with the Central Minnesota Conference on Aging. We had 100 people there. Obviously, when Medicare was making their changes at the first of the year, we had a number of people who were pretty stressful about those changes, and they were able to come and get a lot of information. We also belong to an association, Minnesota Association for Senior Services, and we also belong to the Cold Spring Chamber of Commerce. Our financial highlights, we had a quilt bingo last year. It was supposed to be on April 15th, and that lovely blizzard forced us to postpone that for two weeks. So, we got to learn how the schools cancel activities. We raised almost $7,000, and we took an additional $3,000 out of our checkbook, and we invested in the Recorey Senior Center fund. We already had an account there, kind of hoping to entice some of our seniors to include us in their estate planning. We get a lot of support from our Alliance Club, we do a couple of meat raffles, Stern's Operation Roundup. Last year, we were able to purchase an AED with one of there, and then we also got some additional money this year. We have an annual fundraiser and membership drive. We have about 200 members, and about $3,600 is collected from the members. Our membership fee is only $5 a year. So, membership is obviously not the biggest thing in our budget, but our members are very, pretty generous with us. We are able, Community Ed allows us to run some ads in the three-times-a-year brochure. Our casino trips make a little profit, our sightseeing trips as well. We are fortunate to have Teal's receipts coming in every month. We hosted a taproom takeover last year. We made almost $2,000, but we were not selected this year, so we're looking for ways to recruit that. And then we also continue to pay Recorey $3,600 for rent. I think many people in our community just assume that because we're in a school building that we are under Recorey's auspices, and we are not. We are totally self-funded. In fact, they do charge us rent. I always put together a little financial thing on the bottom, and I always use 5/31/15 as the date that I start because that's when they hired me. I started June 1st. And I know when the board decided to hire me, they had been operating with volunteers for about four years, and it was kind of just getting by and not a lot of follow-through, no fundraising, those kinds of things. And the feeling was, well, we'll hire a director and pay the director, and when the money's gone, we'll just close. And as you can see, we've shown steady growth, and as of the end of March, we've shown a handsome increase. So, that is our highlights for there. I included a copy of our budget. We operate slightly under $20,000 a year. The first one, the rent to Recorey, the rent has not gone up for several years, so we are very fortunate, and, but it's always kind of in the back of our minds, you know, if the district were ever to increase our rent, that could be problematic for us. I am obviously the biggest expense, and I'm only, I'm a contractor 14 hours per week. We pay a tax, or we pay a Marv Salzer to do our tax accounting, we have our scholarship, we pay to have presence in the brochure, we pay for bakery treats, but you'll see further down that we also get money in for those treats. And you can just see that we're, I think, where we have a balanced budget is obvious from here. It's not a frilly budget. You know, we do depend on the generosity of the service groups and as well as our membership. But, obviously, we have come here with the hopes that possibly the city could assist us with some funding. And I know I had been to a Fifth Monday meeting several years ago, and I talked about that to the group, that I would probably be visiting each of the cities, and I know one of the city administrators, not in this room today, but he right away objected and said, "Oh, we can't do that." And if you look, there is a Minnesota statute that allows, it says, "A statutory or home rule charter city, county, or town," which I'm assuming Cold Spring fits in that category, "may appropriate money to support the facilities, programs, and services of a public or private not-for-profit senior citizen center or youth center." So, you do have the capability legally. With our membership, well, actually, I did a quick demographics of our membership, and you can see that we have 164 people paying members, we have a lot of people who aren't paying members. Our membership is not mandatory, so if someone comes in and refuses to pay the $5, we're not going to bar them from the door. So, we have a number of people who are not part of this, of the 202, but the biggest percentage, 81%, are from Cold Spring. And then 12% are from Richmond, 2.5% from Rockville and St. Joseph, 1% from Watkins, and 1.5% from Foley and Wade Park. Because we are members of the Minnesota Association of Senior Services, which is, the acronym is MAS, we received about 25% return, which I think is statistically significant for a survey to be representative of the population. Of the centers that responded, 77% received funding from their respective city. 13% are self-funded, like the Recorey Senior Center, 7% are funded through their school district, and 3% are funded by a healthcare organization. Now, not all of the demographic information or contact information was voluntary on the survey, and because I didn't want anyone to not respond because I didn't want to provide the information. So, of the cities that did, the senior centers that did respond, you can see that Apple Valley, Blaine, Blue Earth, Brainerd, Burnsville, Coon Rapids, Truxton, Eden Valley, Edina, Hastings, Maple Grove, Monticello, St. Cloud, Wade Park, and Winona all received city funding. Now, Eden Valley, I had a message in to the retired Administrator, but I did not get her response, but I've worked with them through Initiative Foundation, and I know that they have a small room in with their city hall where they do some senior dining and some other activities. St. Cloud, I did not get what percent. I believe they're 100% funded, and obviously, they are over $150,000 in their budget. As well as Wade Park, I've talked with people there, and so you can see that the majority of them are, not the majority, but a fair number are receiving 100% funding by their city, and some of them are well over $150,000 in their budget. Now, there is, on the very last, is a staple, that is a copy of a letter that went to the city administrators in the end of 2016, and where it talked about kind of an introduction about us, as well as the statute that would allow the cities to contribute to our operation. And it went to all three of the city administrators. We didn't receive a single response, but that didn't, that didn't cause us to not continue to think about hoping to get some funding from the city. I have, I believe, five of our board members here in support for this evening's presentation. Would any of you like to speak?
Sure.
Yes, Mr. Schreiner. Oh, I'm sorry, does the, does the mayor have to?
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Come on.
I'm Rich Schreiner from Cold Spring, member of the board. I started coming to the senior center about three years ago, and I was rather amazed that the city of Cold Spring did not participate with the senior center, that it was, first of all, in the school district, was stealthy. We have a very nice facility. We're very happy with it, nothing wrong with it. Once in a while, we're closed because the school is closed. Anyway, I'm very familiar with the city of Blue Earth, which they participate very heavily in the senior center. This year, they are spending $87,000 for their senior center. Their director is a full-time employee of the city. She runs the senior center, but she works for the city. And they've done this for years. They have meals. The city of Blue Earth is 3,300 in population. Blue Earth is, or Cold Spring is what, 40,000, somewhere? Anyway, it's larger, but they've never been involved with our senior center. And we feel, I feel strongly, that it's time for the city to help us out financially. Our board directors, at our last meeting, we had a motion and a second that we asked the city for $20,000. That's a lot of money, understand that. But, if we have those finances, we could do a heck of a lot for our senior center. And I think we have, 25% of the city is seniors, and I don't think we contribute enough to the seniors. We do a lot of things for the kids. We have nice parks, which is great, but I think we've forgotten about us, old folks, and we could use some support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me or our board members?
How many, how many square feet do you guys have up there?
Oh, I knew we were going to ask that. It is smaller. Our old, the old senior center, which was down in the northern part of the building, was probably a third bigger, and so when Recorey wanted to redo some of their, and increase their early childhood programming, they moved us to the more south. And, but I'm not really sure. I know when, Community Ed has the defensive driving classes that come in several times a year, and they draw people from all over central Minnesota, and they have breaks like every hour, and people will come in from other senior centers, other communities, Monticello, different places and stuff, and they'll comment, "Wow, you really have a nice senior center." You know, we have two quilts set up, we have a full kitchen, we have seven or eight tables set up for cards, we have a book library, we have a seating area which has really old furniture, basically castaways from various seniors. But I would have to, I'd have to...
Can you get back to, just let us talk, you guys have? Thanks.
Yes, definitely.
Do you have something, Gary?
Yeah, I do. I don't know if this is very appropriate to say at this point in time, but I'm going to say it. I am very disappointed in Recorey charging the seniors $3,600 a year. If you look at 99% of the people that belong to or participate in the senior center, they've paid taxes for probably 45 years or better of their life. A lot of those tax dollars go to the Recorey School District. It wasn't more than two weeks ago, three weeks ago, they didn't think twice about approving an $800,000 expenditure to fix a parking lot, which all of us taxpayers are going to be taxed now for the next 15 years. I think it is just absolutely ridiculous that the Recorey School District charges the seniors for property in a building they've paid for. And I think that district needs to look at that, and they need to reconsider that, and they need to allow you in there for free. And I'm making that request on television to the school district. That is an embarrassment. And yes, I do think that the city should support the senior center. Shannon and I are brand-new to the council. Jamie's been around a bit, so has Doug, Dave. I'm not sure, I've never seen the letter before, I haven't been on that long, but yes, we definitely need to do something. We need to find some money. But the school district, you need to step up to the plate and do something. This is an embarrassment.
Well said, yes.
Thank you, Gary. Well, obviously, we've received the support from the school district for many, many years. At one time, they funded the senior center director, and as part of a kind of a reciprocal agreement with, they would, the district paid for the senior center director half-time and volunteer coordinator half-time, that was Mary Style, and the district paid for her salary in return for getting six and a half hours of service from volunteers from the senior center in the middle school media center. And I think that arrangement went on for many, many years. And, but then when Recorey moved the middle school up to the high school, we didn't have the, you know, the luxury of being in the same building as them anymore, and then with the first round of, well, Recorey went through budget cuts 12, 13 years in a row, and then with one of the rounds of the budget cuts is when the volunteer coordinator position was removed from the full-time position, and so we had a part-time senior center director. And when she chose to retire, probably eight or nine years ago, is when Recorey said, "Okay, we're not going to replace the position because we don't have the arrangement of the sharing of the, having a media volunteer in the middle school because the middle school's up there." And so, I don't want to fault Recorey for that. And if you notice that in the funding demographics, only 7% of the centers are funded by their school district. So, that is a big difference. It's 3% are from the healthcare, 7% from the school district, 13, self-funded like us.
And I don't think Gary's saying that they need to necessarily fund. What I understand is they can, there's no reason why they can't contribute and make, you know, share in the effort, you know, and I agree with that. That's something that I would challenge the school board to look at. And I'm not saying that we're not willing to look at something either, because I believe that we can look at something for the future. But for me, when I look at it, I'd like to know, you know, is $20,000 exactly what you're looking for, you know? Is, you know, is that the magic number, or...
That is the number that the board chose. I'm not a voting member, I'm ex officio on the board. That is the number that the board chose, and I support them in that request. Could we get by with less? Definitely. You know, I mean, when people always ask, "How are you going to use the money?" Well, there is so much more that we could be doing. With me working 14 hours a week, I don't want to work full-time, so I'm not, this isn't a self-serving request for me to increase my hours, definitely not, but, you know, there is more that we could be doing. We're doing a heck of a lot right now with the staffing that we have.
Right.
So, could we do with less? Yes. But I think the, I think the board chose the $20,000 because that was, that's our budget. And when they were hearing from, you know, what others, what other senior centers are experiencing, you know, receiving from their respective cities, that's where I think the number came from. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a good starting point. If we ask for $2,000.
And, oh my God, no, I get that. And with me having served on the school board in the past, I do know what value the district places on the facilities in the district, and I know what the value that they place on the senior center area. If they were to rent that out to a for-profit venture, they would be charging...
Substantially more, I'm sure.
Probably 15 times more than what they're charging us. And so, we are very fortunate, and like I said, we're really hoping that our rent doesn't go up. So, I think the district feels that they're already contributing in a pretty good perspective as far as what they could be using that space for, for a private party if they came in to rent. Any other questions?
Do you have anything?
Well, thank you very much. Obviously, we don't expect you to say, "Open up the cigar box tonight and say, 'Here it is,'" but we like, you know, we would really like your serious thought and consideration and hope that you can consider. And this may not, I'm not sure what your budget year is, when, what your fiscal year is, if it's a January or if it's a July, but it's...
Down for budget issue.
For January. Okay, okay. So, if you could just please include us in your next round of budgeting, or if you have a little in the cigar box, no.
We know where to find you, right?
Yes, yes, definitely. And please come up to the center. I know Mayor Heinem has been there, Administrator Murphy has been there, Mr. Tyson has been there, or he's, I don't know if you've been in our little senior center, but you've definitely been in the building. So, come and have a cup of coffee and have a roll and just, you know, ogle over the beautiful quilts and, or come and play some cards, and it's a fun place. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Yeah, thanks all, all you guys.
I think we're all going to leave now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to number six. Number one, Cold Spring Minor Subdivision and deed requests.
Hello?
Mayor, Council?
Hi. Have they, they have the information, they have the...
Yeah, you want to recap?
Yeah, I didn't have any reading, but what we have here is a parcel of property that ended up, sticking out from some land we own up at Maple Ridge, and it's only 20 feet in width, and it goes to length...
This is the one to us first?
Oh, we're doing both today?
Both.
Okay. All right, we'll back up then. So, again, we have this parcel of land. When we developed Maple Ridge back in 2005, 2002, I can't remember exactly which, it was part of a land kind exchange, and we kind of got the plat ahead of the exchange, so we ended up with this acreage that did become part of the plat. And the thought was that we'd probably plat more additional land in the near future, and with the downturn in housing and everything, that didn't occur. The land to the west of this, owned by A&amp;D Bacchus, was always kind of meant for Number One to get first chance at it. We won't be doing anything there in the near future, so they've been trying to sell it, and they don't really have access to that property unless it goes through our property. And the parcel we're looking at here to the, to deed to the city is pretty much just going to be an extension of 17th.
First Street.
First. It's in the corner, First and 17th. So, it'll allow First to extend into, to the edge of the city, into the next property that A&amp;D might sell or develop someone else, probably other than Number One. So, it makes sense, I've talked to Mark Bacchus of A&amp;D several times about it, he wanted to be sure before we would do anything with the property that there's for sure be access there. I'm sure the city wants that city to extend that way, and so, we're just dedicating to the city, I think, as it's called, that parcel. So, the city has control over what might, you know, what might happen there to that parcel? Okay.
And then I'll go on top of his explanation. So, to do that, we, a minor subdivision of that large outlot has to happen for the, and that's what the first resolution is, the minor subdivision creating the parcel that will be the future First Street North. And the second resolution is they will deed to us that parcel that's been created, and then the third is accepting that deed. So, each one of these have to be done in that order, but it's all related to the transfer of the title from that minor subdivision to us.
Okay, I'll read the recommendation. To approve Resolution Number 2019-08, a resolution creating a minor... To approve Resolution Number 2019-08, a resolution creating a minor subdivision at the request of Lumber One, Cold Spring, owners of property known as Outlot A, Maple Ridge. I need a motion. Gary makes motion. How about a second? Shannon seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Next recommendation, to approve Resolution Number 2019-10, a resolution accepting the quitclaim deed from Lumber One for the new parcel created by Resolution Number 2019-08 to serve a public purpose. I need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
Shannon makes motion. How about a second?
I'll second.
Jamie seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Okay, another recommendation, to approve signing the quitclaim deed from Lumber One for the new parcel created by Resolution Number 2019-08. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion. How about a second?
I'll second.
Gary seconds it. Any discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Number seven, now it's that other part, huh?
Okay, so as we were out there and Cronin Dan was out there staking this out and everything, Paul Hetland lives in the property on that corner, boarding this property, kind of inquired to me what was going on there. And I think he was aware of, and I was aware of also, and I was planning on approaching him someday. With this, it leaves a little strip 20 feet wide behind his property that is pretty much useless property to Lumber One or anybody else other than Paul or someone that might purchase the land to the west. So I've pretty much entered into a verbal agreement with Paul to sell that strip. But again, we need a subdivision to be able to do that because it was, again, part of that original parcel, A.
And then I also talked to Mr. Hetland because that little strip with the minor subdivision and the deed that we just did in number six created a non-compliant lot in the city. And so instead of having two tax ID numbers for that little strip and his, and then to remember when he sells or the next person sells that they own that strip as well, we can attach it immediately as well, so it'll become one parcel. Until the deed is actually passed from Lumber One to Mr. Hetland, we won't be recording this minor subdivision, because they have to be done together. So Mr. Hetland knows to make sure we get a copy of the deed, or if he takes the resolution after I've seen the deed and recorded it.
Okay, recommendation, to approve Resolution Number 2019-09, a resolution creating a minor subdivision and attachment to the request of Lumber One, Cold Spring, owners of property known as Outlot A, Maple Ridge plat. I need a motion on that. Gary makes motion. How about a second?
I'll second.
Jamie seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, number eight, Resolution Number 2019-11, a resolution calling for a public hearing to vacate a drainage and utility easement.
They're not here tonight, but I've been working with JJR Holdings with Joan Sweeters. When that parcel was brought into the city through annexation and then their building was put up, the original plat had a drainage and utility easement that runs under the building. And title companies are a little more strict now. And as they go to add on to their building and add on to their lot as they're looking to do with their annexation of that parcel, that drainage and utility easement needs to be vacated. And so that's why that's here and having you, you will be the ones that hold the public hearing on it. And so that's why that resolution is there, to ask for the city to set the hearing.
Okay, recommendation, to approve Resolution Number 2019-11, a resolution declaring the sufficiency of petition and setting a public hearing on a drainage and utility easement vacation commenced by a petition of the landowner. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
Jamie seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. There you go.
Set that hearing.
Okay, number nine, Public Works Director John Stevie Madsen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
No requests tonight as well, as you see here. Shoo paper.
Thank you.
Update on, oh, we're fine tuning the water meter stuff, so that'll be a big one next meeting, but. This update on the pilot study, everything's going really well. We're up there quite a bit, fine tuning little things here and there. We'll start pumping nitrates into it next week. We're waiting on the supplier to ship them all. But like I said last time, I believe, it has taken it from 8.920, so things are going really well with the pilot study. Outside of that, that's pretty much another pilot. First Street South, we put up some road work, we had signs, that's kind of all we had available. But it's basically just for the utility workers out there locating. They're doing locating and Dan Cronin will be surveying, and I'm assuming that has something to do with the standard tech feasibility study. So we just threw some out there, there's a lot of workers out there last week, there'll be a bunch out there this week, and just to kind of give them a little more safety. So any residents wondering if there's going to be any construction, no, there's not, it's just for the workers. Outside of that, that's pretty much all I got. We'll start hammering out potholes here soon. We got the air patcher fixed, ready to go for the year, so you'll see us out with that and bear with us on some major potholes around town.
Some good ones.
Yeah, there is. Every time it rains, it makes it worse and worse and worse, so it is what it is, but we'll get them taken care of.
All right. Any questions for John? All right, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Number 10, City Engineer Report, Ryan Litchett.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Connor 158, John kind of mentioned, Cronin is out there getting survey, getting locates called, just getting all that preliminary information so we can get started on the feasibility. Things are progressing. Water treatment, John covered, Alexander Park, we're wrapping design up this week, just trying to fine tune the stormwater at this point, so.
All right.
Yeah.
When do you think you will have that done?
The Alexander-
The feasibility.
The feasibility.
Feasibility.
We had roughly talked July, August, somewhere in there is when we would hold the public improvement, or the improvement hearing, when people get their preliminary assessments. We're talking midsummer.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I apologize, I don't have a better date at this point, but it really depends on once we start getting into it. That midsummer sets us up quite well to, you know, if the council orders the improvements to keep moving forward with design, usually with the anticipation of a January, early February bid date. Otherwise, wrapping up, Alexander Park, design tweaking the stormwater right now.
When is that going to start? Do you know everything?
This spring, yeah, is what I understand.
Okay. Good.
At least all the snow's melted over there now.
Yeah, it was. It was before, and then it came back.
Yeah, there's a lot of little intricacies on it, working through some of the electric service yet, working through some of the splash pad, playground coordination. There's a lot of, a lot of moving parts on that project for sure.
That it?
That's it.
Any questions for Brian?
No. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys. We'll go on to number 11, Police Department Report, Chief Blue.
Mr. Eric, Council, good evening. Just start with some monthly updates for March of this year. In Cold Spring, we had 307 total incidents, 16 medicals, eight suspicious activities, 128 traffic stops with 131 warnings and 39 violations. And in those traffic stops, we had six narcotics violations, two of them being felonies, four other alcohol violations, and then one felony warrant arrest and a stolen vehicle recovered. And then 155 miscellaneous calls for service. For Richmond, we had 103 total incidents, eight medicals, five suspicious activities, 60 traffic stops with 64 warnings and 17 citations. And in those traffic stops, we had two warrant arrests and then three miscellaneous calls for service. Last week was the Chiefs of Police Conference for the whole state of Minnesota. Lot of good information. One of those pieces of information I brought was from, it's a nonprofit organization called Lights On. It's kind of a community outreach type of thing. They, the local, usually it's started by the local police department. We go and reach out to some of the local businesses in the area that are able to fix lights, vehicle maintenance type of things. So what this nonprofit does is they give us vouchers to hand out to people that may have lights out, minor damage to the vehicle, that type of thing, that can be fixed by one of the local businesses in the area. And then that nonprofit ends up paying for that service. It's kind of, it's trying to create more positive interactions between law enforcement and the community. So it's not always, you get a ticket, that kind of thing, you get stopped. So trying to help out, it seems like an interesting program. I've heard positive feedback from the businesses in the area, both Cold Spring and Richmond. So it's on them right now to set, they have to contact the nonprofit organization, it's actually out of Twin Cities, the Twin Cities, and they set up their billing. And once that gets approved, then we can start handing out those vouchers. And then from where that goes, we'll kind of see how the whole process is. But in the front end, it's kind of a positive interaction that I think could help out in the community, so. Just kind of let you guys know about that. Any questions? And then also, I don't know if anybody's been following it, but legislation approved as of August 1st, the Hands Free legislation, which means you won't be able to have your phone in your hand at all anymore, which should help with distracted driving, assuming everybody sees it quite a bit. Everybody has a phone in their hand, whether it's talking, texting, scrolling through stuff, but the more, in my personal vehicle, I see it more than in the squad, but it's definitely out there. So just trying to get the word out, I've seen some commercials already started, and there'll be more advertising as we move forward, but just trying to get word out as much as possible. And there's different links and stuff out there, and I know handsfreemn.org has a lot of information, if people want to go out and find that information. And then just one other thing to remind about the bike rodeo at the DEF in Cold Spring on May 8th at 5:00 PM. And then in Richmond on May 22nd at 5:00 PM at Centennial Park. Bring your kids out, get their bikes registered, we'll have a different setup for the kids to bike through, stop signs, road signs, different things, and company information for the kids, so. And then a drawing for a free bike at each one. So anybody that can come out, please come out. That's all I can do.
You got anything for Jason?
No.
Thank you. Thanks, Jason. Number 12, City Administrator Report.
Both of these are resolutions for, that would normally be in the consent agenda, but because this year is the first year of our new large gathering permit, and Hometown Pride has changed some of their activities. They want to keep Main Street closed a little longer from Red River to Second and open it up in stages so that there's some activities that the Legion would like to have Saturday that goes a little later. And so that's why I have this here, is to let you know that they're changing up some of their activity for Hometown Pride. And so their street closure is going to be longer. And another one is the car show now is going to have closure behind the green for access for the vehicles to get in and out and get in and out. I'll probably have to walk, the parks come to the car show. So that's that first one.
Okay, recommendation, to approve Resolution Number 2019-05, a resolution granting certain approvals for Hometown Pride Days on Thursday, July 25th, Friday, July 26th, and Saturday, July 27th, 2019, namely, application for event license and street closures. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion. How about a second?
I'll second.
Jamie seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
The second one was with the Sunshine Run, they stopped, they sent them the large gatherings when it's more than 100 people, and they stopped in on Monday and talked to the chief and I about it and talked about a street closure on Main Street, which we both really weren't aware that it closed, and obviously under our ordinance, the council has approved street closures. So this, they've already submitted next year's application as well, but I have some things to talk to them about for next year. But this is to allow them to close that part of Main Street. And they didn't really explain where, so I guessed on it. I don't think they're closing as far as this resolution said, but it gives them the opportunity to close up to where they need to close.
Okay. Recommendation, to approve Resolution Number 2019-12, a resolution granting a street closure for Main Street from Fifth Avenue North to Ninth Avenue North from 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM Saturday, April 27th, 2019. I need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
Jamie makes a motion. How about a second?
I'll second.
Gary seconds it. Any discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Anything else? That's it? All right. And we'll go to 13, List of Bills and Additions, recommendation to review and accept payment of accounts payable according to the listed supplemental list presented by city staff. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion. How about a second?
I'll second.
Jamie seconds it. Any discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Number 14, General Questions and Comments from the City Council. Jamie?
Nothing from me, sir.
Shannon?
Nope.
Gary?
Probably soon enough.
Well, I was going to give you, I almost high-fived you, so I-
I got one thing. Wednesday, May 8th is the first farmer's market. Starts at 3:00, goes till 6:30 at the country store parking lot for everybody.
For summer or spring, one, yes.
And that's every, it's going to be every week, every Wednesday after that. Number 15 then, Board and Commission Updates, Planning. We just pretty much discussed that, yeah.
The Maple Ridge.
The Maple Ridge, that whole thing, we discussed that. And that's pretty much-
That's all we talked about, right?
Yeah.
The plat. The JRR plat.
Oh, yes, Sweeters. The Sweeters want to be, yeah, that should be coming up, probably next meeting, right?
Maybe two weeks.
Yeah.
Then that's it.
That's it. How about heritage preservation?
No meeting.
No meeting? How about parks?
I want to cover that since-
I can cover that.
You want to cover that?
Sure. We had our annual tour of the parks. It went well. One of the big conversations was the possibility of a future dog park. So we kind of looked at different spots for that and put some things together. We're discussing it between staff now and different things to make sure that that's the proper spot, but we'll figure it out for sure. Looked at some other situations at other parks and kind of came up with plans to fix some things and improve things. Outside of that, the parks look pretty good. The park worked out. That's pretty much it.
The most citizen interested in a frisky golf course, but we really don't really, we don't really have the space for it. So did direct it to some property owners outside of the city that might want for it.
Yeah, there was a minimum of five acres that they needed, it's pretty tough in town here, but. Outside of that, that's pretty much it.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
How about EDA?
We have a new seat representative, which I believe we met last time. We're really working and focusing on marketing plans and getting our name out there and trying to help, one, fill some of the vacancies, help- to help, one, fill some of the vacancies, help new businesses come into town, help businesses here in town with our rolling loan plan. So we're working on plans to try and move those forward. And we got some really good steam right now behind it, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Recorrie Trail? No meeting? All right, well, then we're going to go, move on to number 16, Close Session Pursuit to Minnesota Statute, 13D.05 subdivision 2A4, a review and, to review and discuss an individual's private medicals evidence.